Hello Facebook family, thank you so much again for joining us tonight. I'm Crystal Dillard and I'm a candidate for State Representative in District 131 here in Houston. And this is my Schoolhouse to the State House podcast. I know you're used to it now, we always come on at 6:30 or right around 6:30 every week. And I like to bring to you information, information that is useful to you. And sometimes I will even pull another candidate that I have heard information about. And I'm interested in, and I think that you would be interested in too, and kind of get their perspective. Because what we have going on right now is a lot of different, a lot of different dialogue going on. Even just in the country, we've got different dialogue, different, different sides of the coin. And the voters need to hear that, they need to hear that. You don't only need to hear what I believe and what my perspective is. But when I hear something interesting, or when I think that someone has got a story that is compelling, that's something that I want to share with you. And today, I have got someone that I think that you would be very, very interested in knowing more about. He is Gary Harrison, and he is a candidate for Harris County Commissioner in Precinct 2. And he is joined with his daughter Skylar Harrison. And that in itself is going to give you a little bit more, a little bit of a different take. We're going to kind of get the candidate's side, and we're going to kind of get a perspective of a daughter of a candidate who is running for office. So that'll be a little bit interesting. If you want to pull in your preteens and your teens so that they can watch too, please do so. But without any further ado, introduce yourself to us, candidate Harrison.
Hello, I'm Gary Harrison, and I'm running for Commissioner, Harris County Commissioner, Precinct 2.
Okay, and introduce yourself, young lady.
Hello, I'm Skylar Harrison.
And she's the daughter. Awesome, awesome. Gary, one of the reasons that I, that I brought you here today is because, you know, like myself, I've got to be honest with you when I tell you this. And I can tell you that I am not the only one who has sat in this position before. But tell me exactly what does a county commissioner do?
Well, uh, they're in charge of road bridges, contracts, everyday contracts to do business for the county. They control the funding for the county, or they allocate and help each county department with budgets.
Okay, and I know that one thing that I really am aware of, and it's because my mother participates in it. It's a lot of county precincts, they have different activities for seniors. That seniors participate in, and active activities for different segments of the community. And that's, that's something that's funded by the county too. So that's interesting to me, is that something?
Yeah, that, that is a really big part of, one of the things that the Commissioner's office do is provide. Matter of fact, they have a community centers. In Precinct 2, there are probably 13 or...
That's a big precinct, yes.
Activities, I mean, there's so many centers that, that, that Commissioner, that precinct is responsible for.
Well, Gary, awesome. I want you to go backwards a little bit, and I want you to tell me a little bit about your background. Are you a Houston native? Where'd you go to school? Where'd you go to elementary school, high school, middle school?
No, I'm not a Houston native, I'm from Beaumont, Texas.
Okay.
I was born in Beaumont, and we moved to Houston along with my dad. When he moved down here, he was employed with the Department of Labor. He worked with OSHA, and his area responsibility was Harris County, Port of Houston, and what have you. So that's how we landed in Houston.
Okay, where'd you go to high school?
I went to James Madison.
Ah, that's in Houston? That's in Houston? And you, did you do any sports in high school?
I played, I played football at Madison and, and, and went on and played collegiately at, now it's the University of North Texas.
It was then?
But then it was North Texas State.
Go Mean Green, right? Mean Green Eagles, absolutely. I know you're still very active with the Alumni Football Association with the University of North Texas. Well, this is something that I think people would be really interested in. And this is something that I know about, just in learning about you. But, but this is very, very interesting to me, and it, it really leaves a soft spot in my heart. You are a 30-plus-year retired Harris County Sheriff's Department Commander. Correct? Tell me, tell me a little bit about that. When did you start with the Sheriff's Department?
It seemed so long ago. I think I've worked in every area of the Sheriff's Office that you can work in. In my 30-plus-year career, I rose up through the ranks. And back then, we called them light blues.
Okay.
And I, and light blue was a jailer.
Okay.
So I wrote, that's how I started with the Sheriff's Office as a jailer. And then you have to earn your right to go to the academy.
Okay.
And then you go to academy, and then you branch into the other aspects of law enforcement, but...
And when did you retire?
I retired about four years ago.
Okay.
As a lieutenant, I, I retired, and I was a field operations commanding Homeland Security.
Okay, so you went all the way through, and I think you told me before that you worked in different task force?
Oh, I worked, let me see, I can go down, I was, I worked the jail. And of course, what's going on in the jail now is, is terrible.
It's scary.
I worked the jail, I worked the court system.
Okay.
So, but security of the court, worked the streets as a patrolman.
Okay.
I was a field training officer as a patrolman. Then I moved on into investigations where I worked as a youth violent offenders investigator. And then I moved on and worked as a homicide investigator.
Wow.
Then I became a supervisor, became a sergeant, and worked back in detentions as a supervisor.
Okay.
Then I went to, back to patrol, worked the streets as a supervisor. And then I promoted and became a commander, lieutenant. Then I went to, back to the streets as a shift commander.
Wow.
And then after being a shift commander, then I was asked, and I moved up to Homeland Security where...
And what does that entail?
Oh, that entailed the SWAT teams, the air operations, the marine unit, the bomb squad, the hostage, the maritime security, the industrial security, the emergency management unit. So I had all those responsibilities.
Wow, and that's a lot of responsibilities, that's a lot of responsibilities, Gary. So, I mean, I guess this question doesn't really need to be asked, but I'm going to ask it anyway. When you were growing up, did you ever think that law enforcement would be your field of choice? Did you always want to?
No, you know, like, like, like many, many, many young men, when especially the athletes in there, and they're doing well in, in athletic endeavors, you, you inspire to, to, to play in a professional rank.
Right.
So that didn't come about, but when I was at Madison, I had a criminal justice teacher.
Okay.
Just so happened, her last name was Ms. Harrison. And, and Ms. Harrison, I, I was so impressed with her that, that, that made me think about law enforcement.
Wow.
So, and then when I got to the North Texas State, North Texas State started a criminal justice program.
Okay, awesome.
So that, that continued, that continued my interest. And, and then I guess after athletic endeavor, that's the direction I went in.
That's, that's, well, it was kind of in your blood, once you got a taste of it, you never let it go, okay? Gary, tell me about your connection to Precinct 2. What makes Precinct 2 so dear to you? Have you been a resident of Precinct 2?
I've been a resident of Precinct 2 for 30 years.
Wow.
Yes, I, I've seen the economic changes, social economic changes in Precinct 2. And matter of fact, as a patrolman, I patrolled in Precinct 2.
Wow.
Yeah.
So you are, and tell me what that precinct encompasses. I know that it's a large precinct, I think that you were saying it's parts of Baytown?
Correct.
Parts of?
Well, it used to be, and it still have parts of Crosby, but they happened to redraw the lines here recently. But it was Crosby, Highlands, Texas, Baytown, goes into La Porte, goes in Shore Acres, it goes in El Lago, it goes all that NASA, Seabrook area. Yes, stretches all the way down to the south.
Okay.
It encompass Aldine area, and some parts of the city around Navigation Harrisburg and that area, that precinct.
So when you were, when you were on the streets working as a Harris County Sheriff's Deputy Lieutenant, you, was it in that particular area too? So your, your area was all of that, so you saw, you, you're familiar with this territory?
Correct. I'm familiar when it used to encompass the Tascaseta, the Summerwood, Sheldon, Channelview, North Shore.
That's huge, that is a huge area.
What about the Mustangs, congratulations.
That's right, I had to remember what you're talking about, yes, congratulations.
They won the state championship in football.
Yes. Gary, obviously you've got a preteen daughter sitting here.
Yes.
Yes, and she's going to be going to school and growing up in that Precinct 2 North Shore area, and taking advantages of all of the, all of the amenities that that area has to offer. I know that you said you have been there 30-plus years.
Correct.
I want you to take me back about four years ago, about the same time of year, four years ago. And tell me a little bit about you finding yourself in a bit of an uncharted territory. What was going on then?
Well, four years ago, I'm a widower now. My wife, whom was also unemployed, the Sheriff's Office.
How many years?
She was approaching 30 years also. Well, she, she, she took ill, and, and, and she passed. So within those 30 years, we, we have served the community. Me and, and my wife have served the community for that, that long in Precinct 2.
Wow.
And, and, and when I retired, I was like, well, you know, I hear about some of the things that, that some of the citizens, some of the community are concerned, concerned and want to improve on. And, and instead of sitting on the sideline and just saying, oh, I hope it gets better for y'all. No, it, you know, do something about it. So, so since I have the experience, I have the background, I've been in the community, I decided to put my name and run for Commissioner where I can try to affect these changes for the better, for the community.
Okay, and you know, it's interesting because as the father of a preteen daughter, what are some of the things that you and your daughter have witnessed or seen in the community that you, that are concerns for you? With her becoming a teenager, she'll be driving, she'll be, she'll be going to high school.
Yes.
And she'll be, you know, with her friends in this community in your absence. What are some of the things that are concerns of, of yours that you think could be addressed and better to make sure she has a safe environment to grow up in?
Well, for me, with my background of being a policeman, and being a policeman in that area, one of my concerns is crime. And I, and I think that's one of the, has to be on the top of the list to, for any community. Because people want to feel safe in their homes, they want to feel safe in their communities.
Yeah.
You know, I, I live in Precinct 2, and I can't even recall the last time I seen a patrol car in my neighborhood.
Stop, no.
I can't recall the last time I seen a patrol car, a patrolman, patrol in my neighborhood with the windows down, waving, doing whatever, I can't re... Community, I guess community-based policing doesn't exist anymore, and I know that...
Is that important, is that, is community-based policing important?
I, I think it is, I think it is, because you get to know what's going on in your area.
And the neighbors.
But right now, they're strapped.
Right.
They're strapped, they're, they're running from, from call to call. You know, and, and I guess, you know, even back when I was on the streets in, in the late 80s and, and early 90s, you know, we, we ran from call to call, but you would think things would have improved by then.
Yeah, yeah, well, you know, and the thing about it is, Gary and Skylar, some of the things that we have been met with is, there's absolutely no way we could have anticipated it. And I happened to look at this, and this was something that was disturbing to me. But, and I happened up on this particular website just in the last year. And it was called, let me get it right, I believe it was called End of, End of, End of Call, where the, the police officers who died in the line of duty. There's a website that honors them and tells exactly how they were, you know, how they, how they came to pass away. So many police officers became victims of COVID.
Yeah.
We lost a lot of police officers like that. And that is something that, that I didn't even realize. Because you don't think about that, and, and them being first, you know, first in the, in the door, you know, when, when something happens. And they are automatically exposed to things that they don't necessarily, that some of, some of us take for granted because we get the chance to mask up and do what we need to do. But, you know, sometimes they may not even have that opportunity to do that. We've lost a lot of officers and people in law enforcement in that way.
You know, the, the men and women that, that, that get into law enforcement, it, they want to serve.
Yes, they do.
It, it, you know, just like I commend the firemen. And I, and some of my best friends, one of my best friends is a fireman, and I tease him all day about, man, I'm not going in a burning house, I said, I'm not doing that. And he tells me, well, I'm not going in that house if there's a guy with a gun in there.
Yeah.
So it, it, it's a calling, and certainly it's a calling, and, and they're certainly challenged right now. They're, they're, the, the law enforcement is certainly challenged with, with, with the things that's going on in the nation with, with COVID, you know, regardless, they're still trying to do the job.
Yeah, they don't have a choice. They, they have to get it done, and they have to get it done, it's becoming more and more dangerous. And they still have to get it done. And when they have to go out and recruit, they have to recruit in the midst of all of the things that you just named, and they still have to get it done. And with that in mind, I'm going to turn to Skylar because you have a unique experience in that you grew up in a household with two police officers. Was it difficult for you to get your friends to come over to spend the night? Were they afraid to come over?
No.
They didn't? What did they, when you would invite them over, they wouldn't, they wouldn't say, what would they say? I guess their parents were probably, their parents were probably happy. They felt like they were extremely safe. Did you guys, did, did your mom and dad watch over everything that y'all were doing? Or did they give you your privacy? They gave you your privacy? They did, that's good. What, what about now? Is your dad, is your dad pretty, pretty good with letting you hang out with your friends? Are your friends scared to come over now because he's? No, he's a gentle giant, right? Okay, Skylar, tell me this. What are some of the things that you and your dad, when you all just have a father-daughter day, and you pull away, and you get to pick, because I know you always say, I want to be the one to pick? What are some of the things that you guys like to do when y'all get together?
Go fishing or play football.
Okay, okay. Now, I understand that you are into sports. What are some of the sports that you like to play?
Basketball and volleyball.
Both of those?
Yes.
Are you playing, you can't play because you're in the sixth grade, right? So you can't play in school until next year, right? So the next year, when you get to play, are you going to, you want to be on both the volleyball and the basketball team? Or have you decided yet?
Just one.
Just one? And which one?
Volleyball.
Volleyball? And how tall are you now? You're pretty tall.
I'm not sure.
You're not sure about how tall is she, Gary?
I would say Skylar, she wants to play volleyball, but she, she can, she can play some, some basketball. She can play some B-ball, she's good at basketball, she's tough.
And that's good, and you have to be, especially if you're going to school in North Shore.
She's tough.
If you're going to school in North Shore, you better be, you, you better, when you walk onto that court, you better be, you better know what you're doing.
She's, she's been all meek now, but...
She got shy, she got shy all of a sudden, but that's okay. Now, let me ask you this, let me ask you this, Skylar. Part of the job of a county commissioner, part of their job is to make sure that there are programs in the parks, that there are programs for teens and seniors and different segments of the community. Now, if you had a wish list of the kinds of things that you would like to see in the parks over in Precinct 2, if your dad is elected, what kinds of things do you think you would like to see for people your age?
Maybe some more playgrounds.
Okay.
And some more exercise places.
Okay, do you swim?
Yes.
Okay, are there lots of pools over there right now?
No, matter of fact, we go to a city pool.
Okay.
That's close by Skylar, and when she literally go to the city pool.
Okay.
And the only pool that, that I know of, and I may be wrong, is operated by the YMCA.
Okay, well, let me ask you this, Gary, with that in mind, having a preteen daughter who's moving quickly into teenhood, what are some of the things that you would like to see happen over in Precinct 2? To, to keep the younger people involved and to keep them engaged in programs in the community as opposed to getting into things that may not be to their best benefit?
Hey, with, with, with those community centers that, that's under the Commissioner's privy, why, why don't we try to look into starting a youth league? Why aren't we looking to start a basketball league, or volleyball league, or something like that in the summertime? You know, I know there's many other entities that provide those type services. So why can't we provide those services also? So maybe, maybe we can do some interdiction, maybe we can do some prevention.
Right.
And, and to keep the, the kids in the right direction. But, but one of the things that I, I like to do as Commissioner, I, I'm really focused on, on crime, safety, and our seniors, you know.
Yes.
Skylar told me one day, she was on the phone, and, because if, if she rides the bus, she was walking home, and she told me that, we was on the phone, and she said some guy in a truck or something was following her, or says something to her.
Yeah.
And, and you don't know how that went through my heart, because I'm, I'm a block away. Not a block away, but still can't get there fast enough.
You couldn't have gotten to her fast enough, right, right.
So that, 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 that entrenched me.
Right.
And that just sent so much fear in my heart, and, 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 and now she doesn't do that now.
Yeah.
She, if she's not with her group of friends.
Right, it's, and, and that, and what you said was very, very important, especially, and that, we touched on that a little bit in one of our podcasts that we did not too long ago, after the Astroworld incident. And making sure that young ladies and young men are, if at all possible, you're in a group, and you don't find yourself alone.
And I don't know what happened, but she usually have her friends with her when they're getting off the bus and stuff like that. But I guess that particular day, it was some miscommunication, but got it together now.
Yeah, okay. Skylar, let me ask you this. If you could speak to other people in your community, your friends, parents, some of your teachers at school, because all of them are voters, tell me two reasons why you think that your dad would be the best one for them to vote for? What are some qualities that you know your dad has that would make him really, really good in that position?
He's brave and hardworking.
Okay, he's brave and hardworking, that's so, that's so, that's a nice compliment, that's a nice compliment. Brave and hardworking, yes, you need, yes, from your preteen daughter. You need to have those particular quali, qualities. Gary, with that in mind, if you wanted to, if you could talk to the viewers about the important things that you would like to see done in the community, or the, the two main things that, reasons why people should cast their vote for you, what reasons would you give them?
Well, I, I, I say this, I'm not a politician.
Yes.
I'm a public servant.
Right.
I've served for more than 30 years in one capacity.
Right.
I elected to serve in another capacity that I'm, I'm seeking.
Right.
In this capacity, you know, I have the, the, the resources to dedicate to the community, to dedicate for public safety, to, to back our law enforcement. Not trying to defund the police.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not trying to have them work without cost of living. I, I want them to get paid. That is a dangerous job.
Yes, it is, absolutely.
And, and just, just myself, in the course of my job, had tried to take my life three times.
Wow.
So I, I know...
You had someone try to take your life three times?
Yes.
Wow, wow.
So, so I know from, from experience that that's a dangerous job.
Yes.
And, and, and I think they should be compensated for it. Right now, I don't think the, some of the Commissioners in the courts right now are doing all they can do to back our law enforcement.
Okay, well, let me, let me ask you this.
With just, just, look what happened in the jail.
Yes.
That is terrible, that, that, that upset my stomach, that, 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 that was terrible, what happened to the sergeant.
Yes.
They're, they're...
And I asked, I asked you about that too. And, you know, and it's interesting because you told me, when I asked you about that happening, and you said, back when I was, when I was, you know, a jailer, they pretty much had those, those, those units under control.
Correct.
Yes. What, what has, what has happened? Is it, is it society that's different? Is it, is it the way that things are done that's different? Is it a combination of both?
I, I think, I think we had a paradigm shift on, on the way to jail is handled, on the way, the, the approach of, of working the jail. Certain programs, you know, staffing has always been an issue.
Okay.
Funding has always been an issue. Passing jail inspection has always been an issue.
Right.
So this is nothing, nothing new.
Right.
So, but, but I guess the, the course that, 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 that has been taken is not working. That, that, that experiment is not working. And we need to get back to, to some grassroots and some, and some solid management of the jail.
And, you know, with, with that in mind too, with, we've seen just in the past two years, such an uptick in the types of crimes that people are even attempting. I remember, you know, you didn't even hear about, about people who were in custody attempting certain types of things. And, you know, that is, is that a result of, of, you know, what we've dealt with as far as COVID is concerned, the stress that people are under? It could possibly be that, that many of the people who are, who are minding the, the inmates are seeing things that they've never seen before, as far as...
I'm quite sure, because COVID has put a whole new leash on just funding. Not, not funding, but staffing.
Yes.
You know, when, when you, when you have, you know, if you have a certain number of staff that you need to meet to effectively run the jail, and you're not meeting those goals every day.
Right.
And, and you, and you're shifting people, and you're calling people in, and you're trying to do all these makeshift changes, you know, it's, it's hard. It's hard, it's difficult.
And you know what, what, you just brought something up, and I didn't think about this either. The people who are in custody, they see this, they, they see this. And is there a chance that when they see you maybe scrambling to try to make sure that you're covered, they feel that that's their time to take advantage of a situation?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
Well, well, Gary, let me, let me switch gears a little bit and ask you, ask you about this now. You know, at the very beginning of the podcast... You know, at the very beginning of the podcast, we talked about the vast area that Precinct Two covers. Precinct Two was a huge area, and one thing that you brought to light, and just in the in the areas that you named, that is going to be an ethnically diverse uh area with uh different clusters and different parts of Precinct Two. And they may have different cultures, incomes, concerns, uh socioeconomic uh uh status in the different areas, and it it goes from probably quite high to medium to 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 lower. How would you effectively meet the concerns of that much diversity in an effective way?
Well, me are are, you have to get out in the community. You you have to get out to to talk to your people, you have to get out and meet with your people. You have to let them or you communicate, what can I do for you? It is not what can you do for me, it's no, what can I do for you? What what makes your life easier? Uh me as commissioner, you know, I wanna, I'm I I I'm I'm a servant. And and I wanna help you uh and, because I live in that same community. So I I and it's gonna be equal reputation uh representation for everyone. Not any one particular for everyone.
Right, now, with you and Skylar living in that community for as long as you have, you were saying that when you bought your home, you bought your home as a new home over uh 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 recently built home. Okay, and that was some thirty years ago. How have you seen Precinct Two change? And have the changes uh been all over the precinct? Have the changes been in certain areas?
We we have certainly more um residential areas going up. We have.
It's growing a lot over there.
The the populists have have increased in that area, in in the North Shore area uh dramatically, it it is in increased everywhere, there's new home building everywhere. If you get on uh one forty-six uh going toward Seabrook, you'll see all the new home construction. Uh along trying to fit in with the petrochemical industry down there. So um and you know, that that that's another big part of Precinct Two. You know, you you got the nation, probably one of the nation's leading petrochemical industries.
If not the.
In the nation, then you have the Port of Houston. In Precinct Two. So it it is so many things, and so many things we we can improve on uh and and getting better and and you you know, our relationship with the petrochemical uh industry, because we don't want any off-site uh uh impact with any incidents that may happen in in that. You know, we still wanna ke- keep our community safe, we still wanna uh keep our port uh vibrant and bringing in more business, because the more business we get, is the best for our community. So so it all goes hand in hand, all ties together.
Well, let me let me ask you this. Tell me a little bit about um, you know, being uh in that Baytown North Shore area and being in Harris in the county in general, in the county in general. How uh how do you think that the county commissioners, how many county commissioners are there? That serve, okay. Is it is it uh imperative that county commissioners are able to work in tandem? To make sure that things are addressed in an effective way? Or are there different concerns in Precinct Two than there would possibly be in at at other precincts?
I I think each precinct has its own characteristics and uh in his own uh demands. You know, you it it'd be, it would be so easy if you can do a cookie cutter version and and what's good is good for everybody, but that's not the case. You know, you take some other uh precincts of Nar, they don't have a petrochemical industry. They don't have the the Port of Houston uh uh down there, so it's different entities or different uh problems that they have to solve that, you know, Precinct Two wouldn't have to solve. So you can have to be flexible, and you got to be able to work together. Uh, you know, recently, I I I've seen some commissioners meetings uh and and I've I've seen some some challenges with with the relationship that they are having. And and it it's timeout for that.
Yeah, yeah, and the thing about it is, I think that what you're saying is definitely uh uh par for the course with a lot of uh with a lot of relationships in different areas of uh politics right right now, even in the entire country, that i- is necessarily, that that is definitely the case, but.
Remember, like I said, I'm not a politician. So I I'm not gonna even wear that jacket. I'm not a professional politician going from one political job to the next. Not a politician. I'm just a a servant, servant of the community.
However, in that capacity as servant of the community, you are going to be dealing with some people who are politicians.
That's correct.
Yes, and um you're going to have to have to work with them. And work in tandem with them.
Work with everyone.
Absolutely, and what are some of the things that you think that you would uh do differently or that you could do to maybe uh bridge that gap and bring people together to be able to make great decisions that would impact the community as a whole?
I have no problem with reaching, a- as they say now, uh reaching across the aisle. I have no, I can care less. All I'm concentrating on, what is what is good? What what is gonna work? If if a Republican uh 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 candidate or Republican commissioner has an idea, if it's good, it's good. If a Democratic uh person has, if the idea is good, it's good. It don't matter where it comes from, because it all serves the community, it all serves Harris County.
Yes, um, now, let's jump back a little bit, and I want you to tell me a little bit about growing up in the community that you grew up in, and uh you grew up, tell us about where you grew up.
I grew up in Haren Clark, I believe that's part of uh what, one thirty-one?
It is.
I grew up in Haren Clark, uh uh proud of Madison Marlin. I I I had a good childhood, I I I can't, I can't say anything uh bad about about growing up over there. I I just, no, I still have friends over there.
Absolutely, and I know, and and I won't call any names, but I know um there you have another person that you were in the Harris County that you played football with in the Harris County Sheriff's Department uh and is is now retired, but uh the Sheriff's Department produced a lot of of very uh successful law enforcement officers, now retired and uh and uh going into different things.
Some, you know, one of one of my friends, um, matter of fact, he he went to Madison uh uh with me, he attended Madison and and he became a um Chief Deputy uh Sheriff's Office. Um, had another friend, went to Madison, um, became um uh and he these are all football players that I played football with in Madison. Uh, he he had a distinguished career with um Houston Police Department. Have one that um worked courts for years uh with the Harris County Sheriff's Office. So Madison has been in law enforcement uh in in Harris County for for quite a while. And I just so happen to be the one that still wanna uh serve, but I I guess if I called on them, I'm quite sure they 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 would jump to 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 help and 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 do whatever they can for the community.
Well, let me ask you this, Gary, and um you know, Skylar can kind of chime in on this if she would like to also. You've seen Houston, the city of Houston, Harris County, change a lot in the past since the eighties. And we have some challenges. But we have, but we've been able to meet those challenges. What are some of the things that that you have seen change so much um that we may have to look at a different way of approaching? And uh especially in terms of of the safety of our city and things that would would uh would fall squarely or even partially in the jurisdiction of uh the county commissioner?
Well, uh Harris County itself, the populace in Harris County has in in increased twofold. It's it's probably close to, uh I know it's probably two million or so people just in the unincorporated areas of Harris County. Right now, that's a that's a whole city in itself.
Yes, it is.
And that's not even counting the populace that's within the city limits. So in a course, uh been in Harris County, we are responsible for certain services within the incorporated uh city limits of Houston.
Like what?
We run the courts, Harris County Courts, those those systems that everything that the Houston Police Department and other police department, other municipalities, uh Bel Air, West U, all those cases come to Harris County. Yes, it comes to the court system. Uh, so we we have to be able to uh 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 service those cases.
Okay, and well, tell tell me this, I've often wondered this. How do the constables departments and the commissioners work in tandem? Is that a is that a a a unified unit, or do they work separately to accomplish different tasks?
Well, the commissioners, uh, they include the constable agencies within our number of law enforcement professionals in the county. They include those numbers, and so when it comes to increasing or uh come to uh budgetary matters, they use those numbers to say, hey, we need X amount of uh need X amount of uh officers on the streets, and they include uh the constables. So since they're getting included, hey, why don't we include the constables and and some of the responsibilities? Because I don't think one entity, I don't think the Sheriff's Office can do everything itself. So right now, we need all hands so include those guys. In 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 include those guys with 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 the budgets they need. You know, we 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 don't need uh uh taking money away from them.
Right, exactly, exactly.
If if they were uh, they if they had the attitude to to budget, uh handle their budget responsibly, and they had a a overflow of of money. Keep, that's that's money you don't have to to spend or consider for budget anymore. Let them keep that money. So if they are in need of a patrol car, they don't need to come to Commissioner's Court to ask, hey, can you give me a patrol car? No, you have that money, you to to buy your patrol car to replace uh what is damaged or totaled. I I I'm just in 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 favor of just ju- just being fair, support our law enforcement, support our community, support our seniors. Um, we can just do better in what we're doing right now.
Let me ask you this, uh Gary, and then I'm going to let you uh any any last words that uh that you wanna add, I'm gonna ask you to add those to uh for me, but you have got, and you and you've raised, you have um older children too. And and you have uh you have raised children being in law enforcement. Is law enforcement, the Sheriff's Department, um uh public service in that realm something that you would encourage younger people to go into?
You know, uh with with my other kids, um they they and they're not kids anymore, they they're grown adults. Uh, they they're, they even entered into the service industry, they're in the medical profession. And and so they're they're still serving the community. So I I guess it's just in in embedded in them and 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 because I guess that was the example that they saw when they was growing up. But they, you know, I I I'm so proud of them, um, they continue to serve, they they're professionals now. Uh, and my hat goes out to them, a lot of hard work, a lot of academic work. And they certainly got that from their mother.
Oh, you're so so modest, Gary. Okay, but well, well, let me ask you this. To properly execute the job of county commissioner, do you think that it's necessary to have a law enforcement background? Or do you think it's beneficial to have a law enforcement background?
I think it's beneficial, uh is a law enforcement uh background, the totality of of it, no. No, I would say not, but I've been in the community, I served in the community. So with that background, right now, with what's going on with 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 crime up thirty, forty percent in Harris County, you need someone that has a good understanding of what's going on. I I I I can't say enough, you know, I'm frightened for myself, I'm frightened, I'm concerned uh uh for Scarlett over there falling asleep. I I'm concerned for for everyone, I'm concerned about my neighbors. I I I'm concerned because things are getting out of hand and and we need to address that. And we don't need to uh address that uh by uh defunding the police. We can't address it by by not wanting to uh uh use monies to uh uh do the things we need to do.
How how much uh um collaboration is there generally between agencies when something needs to be addressed in terms of, let's say, uh natural disasters? You you've worked with situations with natural disasters, how much collaboration is there between city, county, and uh uh and um you know, the 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 different uh commissioners, the constables, the Sheriff's Department, the Police Department, how much collaboration has to take place there in order to get things done?
You need everyone cooperating. Um, I was the um uh Win Harvey. Uh, I was um uh, of course, the Field Operations Commander, so I was out in the water. I was out in the boats. I was out with my guys trying to save lives, trying to get people out of those flooded homes. Uh, trying to uh prevent uh 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 a chemical disaster uh with one of the plants in Crosby.
I didn't think about that in terms of flooding and natural disasters, yes.
Yeah, so it is, it's not something I'm standing on the sideline uh about, this is something I know, this is something I've done. So uh as far as cooperation, uh I think we had every agency in the United States uh cooperating. With 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 no problem.
It was a model for what can be done.
A- at that time, we worked closely with uh with everyone, with Coast Guard, with DPS, with uh uh National Guard, with with, you know, we had so many agencies from uh different parts of Texas, e- even I I have a state agencies coming in to help, and and I thought that was a fantastic thing. And I think that's something we need to continue and even uh uh expel on some more.
Okay, if you could ex- expound on that and another uh and one more thing that you'd like to leave us with, I want you to, uh Gary, leave us with how if we wanna learn more about you or what you're going to do to affect this role as county commissioner, if you are elected, in a positive and in a uh in a unique way. How would would uh voters, how would constituents, people who live in Precinct Two, or even people who have questions that they'd like to ask you about? How would they contact you in order to learn more about you, or if they wanna have you come out in order to to speak?
Uh, go to my website, uh voteharrison.com, W W W dot voteharrison.com.
Okay, and what about uh connecting on any other type of social media? Do you uh connect on other types of social media?
Uh, Facebook? Try Facebook, uh try uh Instagram, and I have my website, I I can be contacted with all those.
And we'll make sure that we have all of that uh posted in the uh uh at the bottom of the podcast, so that if people want to reach out to you, Ms. Skylar. She would be at home watching Disney Plus. Right now, but.
What you been watching? Maxino or something, I don't know what you watching, girl.
Well, let me let me say this, if uh Skylar may have to share her dad with the whole Precinct Two area, and uh that means that means you're gonna be out there a lot too in Precinct Two, talking to the people and uh and getting to know the people out there in that precinct, is that a task you're ready for? Oh, come on, you can, you think you can, you you could you get ready for it? I think you could too, I think you could too. Well, Gary Harrison, I wanna thank you so much for coming in, thank you so much.
Invited me.
Yes, and you know, we got to learn a whole lot more about you, because uh you know, when you see someone's name on the ballot.
At number two position for Harris County Commissioner, Precinct Two, number two position.
Position two precinct two, that's, well, that's, that's right, I have no problem with that. But you know, it's important that you can put that face with the uh with the person.
Yes.
And uh and be able to make that connection. Guys, thank you so much for tuning in. Thank you so much for joining me again on the Schoolhouse to the State House podcast. Thank you to Skylar and to Gary and join us next week. Make sure you go to our uh my my Facebook page and uh like my Facebook page, Crystal Dealer for Texas. Donate, donate, donate to my campaign, I'm a teacher, we're getting it done. We are resourceful with all of the donations that we get to make sure we get that word out there. But I'll see you next week from the Schoolhouse to the State House, bye bye.
Bye bye.